All the regular discussion meeting, thirty-four, call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Mabry.
Here.
Commissioner Fabia.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the podium.
I'd like to make a statement to the line of United States of America, the city of republic for which we stand, a one nation, on the island, individual, whatever the need and circumstances are.
Start it out with any public comments? Any public comments?
Ray, slide that thing right towards you, the thing on top there.
Hi, I'm actually, and I want to make a comment on the ordinance with the impound cars. A couple of months ago, my son's girlfriend got stopped, she had a warrant, so she couldn't drive. And evidently, they found, I think, just a pipe in the car, but it was towed for seventy-five dollars, impounded for five hundred dollars. I have to be listening to the scanner, and her that called in, said, "I should come get your car," and I said, "No, there's drugs in the car, you get, you know, it's gonna be impounded." And as far as I know, a marijuana pipe was hit. I never looked at the report, I just saw it in the paper, it says paraphernalia. That's a little bit expensive. It just seems to me to be a moneymaker for the city. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Go to approval of amendments, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I want to make a motion to approve the amendments for regular council meeting on Monday, February, I'm sorry, Monday, April fourth, two thousand sixteen. I move the day being approved.
Second.
Motion's been second, any corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to invoices, for the last couple of weeks, we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have the invoices for Public Affairs, Department of Accounts and Finances, and the Planning Department, five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and four cents, Administration, twenty-one thousand nine hundred three dollars and seventy-four cents, Self-Insurance, one hundred twenty thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, No Expenses in Economic Development, Tourism, four hundred seventy-five dollars, Property Department, four thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents, Community Development, one hundred dollars, for grand total for Public Affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances, of one hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Mayor, I review these bills, find them to be true and accurate, and move the day being paid.
Second.
Motion's been second, any corrections or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. The Stevens bill to pay rolls to Department Streets and Public Improvement is as follows: In the Streets Department, a total of nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, wastewater collection, eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents, Cemetery Department, two thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents, garbage expenditures, of seventeen thousand seventy-six dollars and three cents, for a grand total of fifty thousand six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Mayor Querom, I've examined the bill's payroll, find them to be true, correct, and request payment be made.
Second. Motion's been second, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have bills to public health, taking civil stunt, to the Use Department, I have forty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars, thirty-eight cents, Fire Ambulance Department, I have forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, forty-nine cents, for a total of ninety-seven thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars, eighty-seven cents. I review this bill, I confirm to be true and accurate, I will make you pay.
Second. Motion's been second, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. I have the bills to payroll for public property utilities, electric generation total of four hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents, electric distribution of twenty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-one cents, electric administration of fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents, water treatment of eleven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents, water distribution of fifteen thousand seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents, water administration of two thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, for a van total of five hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred ten dollars and seventy-two cents. During our exam of these bills, we can be true and move them to pay them.
I'll second that.
Motion's been second, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners, and now go to regular business, start with Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. The speaking we have a second and final reading on ordinance zero sixteen zero zero two, deducting fees for accepting landscape waste in our brush pit, I move that we go ahead and accept this as written.
Second. Motion's been second, any comments, corrections? Call roll.
Okay. Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Mabry, and now go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the second and final reading for ordinance amending Princeton City Code, Chapter Nine, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article eleven, administrative communications. It is ordinance number zero dash one six dash zero zero three. I would like to make a motion that we pass this ordinance.
Second. Motion's been second, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
I also have a second and final reading for ordinance amending Princeton City Code, Chapter Nine, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article eight, seizure, impoundment, and zoning of vehicles. Ordinance number zero dash one six dash zero zero four, I would like to make a motion that we pass the second and final reading.
Second. Motion's been second, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Fabia, and we'll go to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have ordinance oh dash one six dash zero zero five, sales tax incentive agreement, this is the second and final reading. It is authorization for the city to enter into an agreement for the expansion and remodeling of the old Walmart building on Main Street. I move that we pass this ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been second, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next I have ordinance oh dash one six dash zero zero six, this is the annual budget ordinance. The city of Princeton is required to submit a budget for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand sixteen, ending April thirtieth, two thousand second. This is the first reading. This entire budget is available online and will remain there for the entire length of its period once it's approved. I owe that we advance this ordinance to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been second, and comments, start with proceed, Commissioner.
Just a few comments on this proposed budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen. So total revenues are twenty-six point four million, total expenditures are twenty-five point nine million. Revenues are down two point eight five percent, and expenditures are down four point seven five percent compared to the previous year's budgeted numbers. We have five initiatives that we're gonna focus on over the next year that are included in this budget, and those are all summarized in this document that the five over-achieved needs are improving cost of efficiencies, establishing financial security, enhancing community engagement, implementing our capital improvement plan, and improving city streets. And then just a few other comments. The city has about five revenue sources that make up more than fifty percent of our revenues. Those are electric, electric fees and charges, water and sewer charges, sales tax, followed by property tax and then income tax. And then as far as expenditures go, the electric fund encompasses about fifty percent of our total budget, followed by water, wastewater, eighteen percent, Police Department expenditures at nine point eight percent, Fire Department at eight point three percent, and then Streets, Garbage Administration, City Cemetery and Property, follow. So that's all I have. Any other questions?
If I could make a comment, I could, Mayor. First off, Rachel, I really appreciate what you did here, and I had a couple of questions during the course of the day, Rachel was kind enough to sit down with me and explain where we're at. So I'm fully in support of this budget that you put together. I'd like to point out on page twenty-four, if I could, under Financial Summary, it says here, projected financial results for two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year, and it says most recent financial projections from the current fiscal year, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, reflect mixed variances to the budget. For all funds combined, the deficit of around one point one million is projected compared to a budget surplus of three hundred and thirty-two thousand. And it goes on to explain some thoughts on that whole thing. I have to say, I commend Rachel for working on something. We, as a council, not coming Commissioner Newman or Commissioner Fabia, we approved a budget from last year that she inherited, and I really think she did a great job in serving what she had to work with, so I want to commend you for the time you spent on that, and the time you took away from your family, since you've been working on this, since you hit the ground, you've been working on this budget. So I fully support what you put together here, and just wanted you to know that. Appreciate what you did.
I got a, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight of this budget. First of all, enhancing community engagement that Rachel spoke of, only just some points of interest, but the city this summer, I think in June, will be hosting an electronics recycling event for Princeton residents only. And that will take place, again, I believe that's in June, I don't know if it's a specific date yet, but that is what it'll come on that. We'll also be working on, continuing work on enhancing our city website, making it more user-friendly. There's already been some updates, there is a interactive mapping GIS page, there's a committee volunteer form for those that are interested in serving on a city board, there's a form online now to fill out to let us know of your interest, and there's also a We're Listening, which is a general comment question forum, and those forms go directly to our city manager, Rachel Spence. The Fire Department will be starting a smoke detector program sometime in two thousand seventeen, they'll be working with the Red Cross to implement the program. Residents who apply for the program will have an opportunity to receive smoke detectors installed properly, free of charge by city staff. And the Police Department will be focusing on a community policing initiative, and we've all seen in the news, there is a growing lack of trust of the law enforcement that has encompassed, you know, the country from coast to coast, and it is important that we continually try to improve our communication service to our residents. So the Police Department will be looking at hosting neighborhood roll calls. The officers will pick a certain neighborhood and hold their roll call on the block, residents are welcome to attend, and they'll get to know the officers and ask whatever questions they might want answered. Just two more, couple more comments here, the capital improvement plan, Water, Wastewater Department will be conducting a comprehensive sewer analysis plan, as well as completing some sewer lining. They'll put together an outline of what needs to be done in the coming years and the potential revenue to fund the projects. The Electric Department will be purchasing a chipper, so they will be bringing their tree trimming around power lines in-house. That's the, in the long run, the seventy thousand dollar a year savings to the city. And one more, the city will take a new approach in handling street maintenance. The city has a robust street plan over the next five years that focuses on supporting the city's plan to improve roadways throughout the city. This year, the city will be completing Bailey Court and Church Street from Thompson Street to the Den, will also be looking at paving, and two or three other streets as well, although those are not finalized. The plan is to reserve and reconstruct approximately twenty streets over the next five years. So I second your phrase, comments about Rachel, she's spent a lot of time on this, spent a lot of time at home, traveling back and forth with Walmart, late nights, early mornings, and I think she did a great job.
I...
And she is now a city resident, I bet, right? She was close on her home purchase.
I have a few questions. First, I want to thank Rachel and the department head. They tightened the belt, they decreased their budget from last year, which is a job well done, hard job, but a job well done. What I wanted to ask, a few questions, I noticed training, we're cutting some training. This will not be checked back in our employees' safety, do you want?
Employee safety is something we always want to focus on, so we try to keep the training in there so we can still, you know, meet those requirements, but going forward in the future years, I'd like to see our trying to increase that to where it was.
Okay. My next one is my biggest pet peeve, is the phone. I know we are going with side blast and, you know, to try to reduce our phone bills. Maybe we could add something to the personnel policy manual. I would like to see the phone costs reduced for next year. Also, I would like if we could put a two-line item, landline and cell phone. Okay, my next one is tourism. I am seeing zero for conference seminars and training. Or, okay, we know, we have some training in there. Considering Kim Frye was thrown into this position last year, do you think conferences and seminars would be existing?
The one that's in there is one training that she has requested to go to this year. What would be the tourism?
Forty-four.
Yeah, so that's for the two thousand dollars, and I will, I will check on what one that was and what's in tail this year, she did not attend any training, even though there was a thousand dollar budget there.
Okay, I definitely recommend training. We also approved, I think it was twelve thousand five hundred, for part-time wages to get to the chamber. Is it in, coming from the tourism fund, because I'm sure we're going to do that this year?
Yes. That is reflected in tax rate services, and it was the seventy-five hundred.
Okay, okay. One more thing, too, we have capital projects. We have forty thousand dollars for capital projects, but on page seventy-seven, it is only ten thousand. Ten thousand for Darius Miller.
That should be the forty thousand that's reflected on forty-four, thank you for noting that.
So seventy-seven should be forty thousand?
Yes. Yeah, the ten thousand, which must have just dropped down from above that with the type of thing, so I'll change that change.
Okay, and then staying on this point, after the last meeting of the Darius Miller Park Committee, they do not sound like they're going to be starting this year at all. Now, at the end of April thirtieth, if this forty thousand is spent, it's gone.
It will, since tourism is separate, but it's in the general fund, you don't have everything you're allowed to, yeah, we'll go back and then we'll have to redistribute our funds.
It will not, it'll wet out, it'll go back into the general fund?
The general fund, yes.
So it'll lead, it'll lead to tourism.
Right. And then we'll have to redistribute what we're gonna budget.
Okay, and this budget was never, the capital project was never voted on, are we going to be bringing that up for a vote?
Any services that are provided of it, Darius Miller will have to come before the council, especially if they're over ten thousand.
Okay, so this is just like a figure of forty thousand, and anything that is spent will have to come to council for approval.
Correct, over there.
Okay, but they were given an initial budget. Eighty thousand, I believe, of eighty thousand.
I think earlier when we were talking about how much revenue the bed tax was generating, and I think we were just having the mayor indicated that, you know, we had roughly those kinds of funds available for a project at Darius Miller, but I don't think a hard budget was ever offered or put on paper. I kinda, I think it gave them something just to kinda work around, at least, but we have to see a final proposal from the group as to what this project is gonna cost.
Shouldn't hard budgets be put on the table so they know what to work with?
I agree. I think that they're kinda working around what the annual bed tax amount is, they're working around the forty thousand a dollar figure, and that's for this coming fiscal year. And then, of course, the fiscal year after that, you know, it can be revisited as well, so they're working with forty thousand. So maybe the project could be multi-year with forty thousand dollars expended on an annual basis toward the process. Correct. I, yeah, and right now, I'm not so concerned about them diving in and getting this, there's a lot of, lot of public, just, you know, conversation out there about what's being done at Darius Miller Park. Lot of people have a lot of different ideas, there's been a lot of communication, so at this point, I'm not even that I'm concerned about them jumping right in and getting this thing done. I don't care if it takes them another year or so, you know, as long as they get it right, and so.
Okay, and I totally understand that, I totally agree, I want it done right, but what if they come to us and say, this project has invested a hundred and twenty thousand?
Then if I have to hear your line, it might take three years to do it.
So there's no hard cap on this Darius Miller Park project?
Well, this is, this is terms of money, so it's, it's, there is no hard cap, we wanna, we wanna see what they're gonna come to us with. They've been working on, I don't know, multiple plans, they're also starting to involve a landscape architect that's from the area, so, you know, and what I think they'll probably do in the end is they'll come to us with two or three different plans that are, that are complete, and then for us to take a look at, the community to take a look at as well, this is gonna be, this is, in my eyes, it's a community project.
Well, my feeling would be, it's not like a hard cap on this, because I do not want this going on through years.
I think it would be in our best interest to see what their two or three proposals might look like, and then from there, we could send them back to the drawing board if we need to. But I agree with you, this should not be, you know, a six-figure project that doesn't have to be, I think we all have talked so far about the Darius Miller Park as being a simple, friendly, warm place for people to go to, but not elaborate and not over the top, and I think that if they get that, we just have to, we haven't received anything yet from them. And the property is not even an acre, I don't think, I mean, it's a very small park, so, you know, I, you know, we don't wanna see a repeat, I think, of what we had up there before, as much stuff that was up there, and, you know, the size of everything, so I think it'll be, you know, they understand, and I, you know, they know where they're, what they have to work yet with, and I think that's what they're, they are looking at, is more of a simpler, simpler plan for that size location. Yeah, I think the bottom line is, it's gonna come back to the council for approval, whether what plan they draw and bring to this, we're gonna say yes or no, depending on the funds available, so.
I would just hate to see them put all this month, because they've been working so hard, they've been doing a great job, I would hate for them to come here with this beautiful plan that they worked on, and it's just not in our price range, and we have to turn them down and say, go back to the drawing board. I think, as I do home projects, I don't go out and buy the furniture and then decide my budget later, I decide my budget first and then go first.
Yeah, and again, they realize the budgetary strains that we have, and they know that they're working with forty thousand dollars this year, and, you know, again, we'll see where it goes, but whatever, whatever happens, it does come before the council, it'll come before the residents as well. Maybe you and I can remind about the next meeting, just where that ceiling is with the project.
Any other comments? Are we still with?
Yeah, with motion, with motion.
You have to do, if we have a motion. Any further comments? Yeah, we have to say, any further comments?
I second.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next we have a document from the Plank Plan Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, that is a preliminary final plan for alternative acres subdivision. The petitioner Jennifer Alters requests approval of our preliminary final plan for one lot subdivision, prize of one point five six three acres. The Plan Commission has recommended that the city and council approve this plan, and Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this final plan.
Second.
Motion's been second, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
I have another document from the Princeton Plan Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Cardosi is the petitioner requesting a special use to allow for a shipping container storage facility in an M two zoning district. The facility will contain shipping containers that will be rented out for personal onsite storage. The Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals unanimously recommends that we approve this with one condition, and that only one level of shipping containers be allowed, no stacking will be tolerated. I make a motion that we approve this special use for one-one-one-nine North Church Street.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments?
I'd like to make one recommendation, that we allow, know it has its material be stored in those containers.
I agree with that. That's, that's right up against the railroad tracks, it's up in very, very north church, so.
Can you put a comment? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
The final document we have is from the Princeton Plan Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, for multi-family design review for seven-seven-seven South Mary. The petitioner, Mr. Warland, has asked us to table this until our next meeting, and I, excuse me, I'm sorry, until the, second meeting, May sixteenth of this year, and I think we should just table this.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Newman, now go to Commissioner Newmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor Querom. We have a proposal this evening from Weaver Consultants Group concerning the monitoring of the groundwater and gas monitoring, and what we call the old landfill, and I'd like to have Rachel explain a little bit about this proposal, please.
Sure. So we, Quinn, from our district, we're present, recently looked to other groups to get proposals for our monitoring out there, and we've been with the current group for quite some time now, and wanted to get some other options, and we got back free quotes, and Weaver Consultants Group submitted this quote, which happened to be the lowest quote, and we think that they'll do a good job and do the same service that we get out there now, and it's about thirty thousand dollars less than we were previously paying, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. With that said, I'd like to make a proposal, a motion that we approve a contract with Weaver Consultants Group for monitoring of the landfill, that costs, not sixty, forty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion's been second, further comments?
I just would ask Rachel and Quinn both, when you engage these folks, that one of their main objective is to cease monitoring on some of the wells that are no longer producing, that we ask the last engineering company to do, and have the best, so.
Do our best.
Can you put a comment? Call roll.
Just one more, and I, a lot of history to this thing, this thing was closed way back in ninety-five, ninety-six, fifteen-year closure. For years, this cost us over a hundred thousand dollars to monitor this, so we pulled this down to, you know, fifty thousand, basically, which is a great job, that's all, it's a question to find it.
Further comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Second, I have a business to have, is we have a proposal from Chamblin Associates to do the engineer work for the, what we call the South Church Street project, would basically start at Thompson Street, head south for about three blocks, and that'll be the engineering work to do our curvy better, as well as aprons and the final surface of that street, which I know the rest on South Church Street will be elated. The proposal from Chamblin Associates is not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. I make a motion that we approve this proposal.
Motions and second, further comments?
I presume that this engineering has not been done previously, is that correct, when we first started that project?
That's correct.
And the lead engineer from G one two, do you know his name?
Dean Chalk, he's going to submit his first proposal on that, sure, it would be his that I'll.
Okay. You put a comment? Coral?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Thank you Commissioner Mabry, now I'll go back to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, I have margin statistics for police, UCOM, police and fire. With UCOM, I have total incoming calls, three hundred and fifty, ambulance related, two hundred and twenty-three, fire related, seventy-nine, city utility, sixty-nine. Fire department, I have total calls of a hundred and sixty-five, fires for rescue EMS, a hundred and fifty-seven, others, four. Police department, I have total calls of four hundred and eighty-four, miles patrolled, twelve thousand one hundred and thirty, service calls handled, one sixty-one, arrest and warning, one twelve, accident handled, one-two.
Thank you Commissioner Fabia, now go to our city manager.
Thank you, I have the hotel tax report from May twenty fifteen through February twenty sixteen. The hotel tax for that time period totals about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and this is up ten thousand dollars compared to the previous time period, the previous year. I also have the sale tax report from May through March. Four sale taxes for March twenty sixteen, they totaled about two hundred and four thousand dollars, which is a decrease of about ninety-seven hundred over March twenty fifteen, and the total sale tax for the same time period, May through March, are down about eighty-eight thousand compared to the previous year.
Any comments?
Thank you Rachel, Rachel, we're still waiting for that detail from the states.
We did get it, it's in twenty fifteen, so now it's just in twenty fourteen, so we can have a comparison.
Okay, thank you.
And I have two items on my agenda, and first I'll read a abbreviated form of the Arbor Day Proclamation. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitats for wildlife. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas to unify, unify our community. And therefore I, Mayor Querom, Mayor Princeton, City of Princeton, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, as Arbor Day in the City of Princeton, and I urge all citizens to support ours to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And I urge all citizens to observe this day by planting one or more trees today, this fifteenth day of April, two thousand sixteen. And the last thing I have on my agenda is four appointments to be approved by the council, we've got quite a few, and we're going to do, everybody's in agreement, we're going to do a, we're going to do a, everybody's in agreement that you have blanket approval. So I'll read these through. Appointments to the Board of Directors of Paranormal Hospital, Linda Gusterson and Dennis Thompson, both for five-year terms expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Dennis Thompson is a new addition to the board, replacing Dr. Greg Davis. Dr. Davis served the board extremely well, he's served continuously for sixteen years, so thank you to Dr. Davis for your, for your service. Appointment to the Board of Fire and Police officials, Mike English for a three-year term expiring on August first, twenty eighteen. Appointments to the Board of Trustees of the Firefighters Pension Fund, Brian Berlin for a three-year term ending on April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Appointments to the Board of Trustees of the Police Pension Fund, Tara Shartwell for a two-year term expiring on April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Appointments to the Industrial Development Commission, Jeff Martin and Mike English, both for three-year terms expiring on April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. And appointments to the Plan Commission, Jim Scruts and Bill Casp, both for three-year terms expiring on April thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Mayor, I move that, I make a motion that we approve these appointments.
Okay.
Motions and second, any comments? Coral?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
And now we'll do our, any old business? Any new business?
Mayor, we have one thing, we have an announcement from the Street Department, and I know that residents are looking forward to this, we have our spring cleanup that's going to be held this year during the first few full weeks of May. So on the east side of Main Street, everything must be out by Monday morning, May second, and the city crew will go through those areas and pick up. And then the next week, on the west side of Main Street, everything must be out by Monday morning, May ninth. It says here, stickers will not be required for extra garbage during the designated cleanup week. Reminder, no electronics or white goods, things like stones, dishwashers, microwave refrigerators, or that little TV set you're trying to get rid of, that doesn't go. No demolition materials, tires, or hazardous items to be collected by city crews. And the goal is, for the courtesy of the, the Street Department, is that they're going to start, and as they pass through your neighborhood, they don't want to have to come back then at the end of the week, so we expect hopefully some good cooperation. And we also want to remind the, it is for the residents of the City of Princeton, not for people outside of the city limits. That's all I have.
Thank you, any other new business?
I just have a question for point, for the electronics. Are we going to be asking for our needs to make sure they are from Princeton?
I, I want to, we really haven't talked about how we're going to go about doing that, whether it's going to be like maybe a billing, you know, if they bring their bills or, I, that's about all I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other new business? Further comments? Okay, I'll, you're taking a motion to adjourn to the next meeting.
Okay, I move that we adjourn to a special meeting on Monday, April twenty-fifth, at sixteen AM in City Hall, and then to the next regular meeting on Monday, May second, two thousand sixteen, at seven AM in City Hall.
Motions and second, Coral?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye, this meeting's just.
Yes.